Thank you. Mr. Seibert?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Cruz?
President.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Uh, Ms. Derlande, is not present this evening? Ms. Seymour?
She's in the red room.
Uh, Ms. Horton, here. You have four members present right now. Would you like to call stand up for his presentation?
.......................................
Okay, the first item on our agenda will have with us President, administer the oath of office to Mr. Lloyd Cruz, who is our appointed, newly appointed city councilman. So, go ahead and introduce your face. And would you have your family come up with you to talk about this? Mr. Cruz, if you'll raise your right hand, please. Do you hereby swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of councilperson and for the city of Southfield? Tell me if all of my statements you have, putting the best of your ... Would you like to introduce your family to the councilman?
Uh, thank you very much. I just want to introduce my family. Hi, good to meet. Uh, first, my father, Lloyd Cruz. Uh, my mother, Marie Cruz. And this handsome guy right here is my son, believe it or not. Uh, Jeremy Cruz, our great levely student in seventh grade. So, I'm glad to have him off this evening, but we may have to get home to get some homework done tonight. But I'm glad that they're all here and be present with me here this evening because I wouldn't be here without any of them. So, uh, thank you for this opportunity.
Well, get your homework done. All right, the next item on our agenda is the ..................
Good to be here. Uh, Madam President, to the honorable members of the Southfield City Council, to our acting mayor, uh, our city administrator, our clerk, our attorney, our planner. I hope you all didn't miss me too much. Um, I'm here, uh, really for two reasons. First and foremost, uh, when I sat down from city council last month, I, I left with a perfect attendance record. And so, my social calendar on Monday night has been pretty clear for the last three years, so I had nothing else to do tonight. Uh, and I'm very happy to be with you, uh, at the Southfield City Council meeting, uh, while my social life on Monday nights are still building. Uh, the second reason why I'm here, uh, is really to talk about my first few weeks, uh, in Lansing, uh, as the state representative for Michigan's 35th District, which of course includes Southfield, uh, and some other communities. Um, uh, I really wanted to take this opportunity to thank city administration. We had a great conversation and meeting today, uh, with city administration and city staff. I really have my marching orders, all for the betterment of the city of Southfield. Uh, and I want to introduce, uh, the two people who will be working in my office on a day-to-day basis, um, and will kind of be my eyes and ears internally in Lansing and externally back to the district. Uh, my district, uh, my legislative director, Jenny Gees, uh, actually couldn't be here this evening. She was with us at our meeting earlier. She is completing her master's in public administration. Uh, so she, uh, had to go back up to Lansing, uh, to complete her, her classes for this evening. Uh, but she's a veteran of Lansing. She's been in, in the House Office Building on staff for nearly ten years. Uh, just recently was legislative director for State Representative John Swetolski out of Warren. He was term limited. Uh, and when I was on staff for State Rep. Rudy Hobbs, uh, she was an incredible resource to me as another fellow staffer. And I knew that I wanted to, uh, bring her on as legislative director. And from my district director position, uh, I'm very pleased that Jason Hopkins, uh, is here with me this evening. Um, Jason is, uh, previously worked for Representative Rudy Hobbs, and that's how I, I got to know him. When I left Rudy's office, Jason entered into Rudy's office. Um, and Jason, uh, is a U of D Mercy Law School graduate. Um, he also has statewide connections. Worked on one of the statewide, uh, campaigns or a candidate this past year, and, um, uh, is a resident of the district, which I'm most excited about. I won't name which community because unfortunately it's not Southfield. Uh, but, uh, he is a resident of the district nonetheless. Uh, and I'm very happy to have Jason on board. So Jason will be my district director and will be my eyes and ears, um, for everything that goes on in the city. If I can't make it to the council meeting, if that Monday night social life picks up, Jason will be here, um, at just about every council meeting, um, because I think it's important for me to have a presence, especially when we're dealing with certain issues. And a lot of those issues I learned here on city council. And as residents, come forward to discuss things regarding the communications portions, I want to make sure that my office has a presence here because that will drive the public policy in addition to the, to the ideas from council and administration. Um, so, uh, I wanted to let you know that the Speaker did assign, uh, committee assignments, uh, Speaker of the House. Uh, I was fortunate enough to be named as the minority vice chair for local government committee. So each chair has a Republican, uh, each committee has a Republican chairman and a Democratic vice chairman. And I think that, uh, the work that we've all collectively done on this city council kind of boosted my name, uh, to, to the top of the list, and I'm selected the top Democrat on the local government committee. I'm also a member of the Regulatory Reform Committee, which deals with a lot of the state licensing, uh, issues and overhaul of those types of things. And the Commerce Committee, no better place for me, given the fact that two-thirds of our tax base is commercial. Uh, so I really did get, uh, quite, uh, good committee assignments for the, for the, for the benefit of, of the city here. Uh, and each of my committees, I would say, I said this to Ministers Orne earlier, ninety percent of the issues, uh, that we face here in Southfield will probably fall somewhere in those three committees. So I'm really excited about that. I'm not excited that two of those committees meet at the exact same time. Uh, so I'll be running up and down the stairs, uh, to make sure that I'm, I'm hearing the proper testimony and taking, uh, the right votes. I was also, uh, honored to be appointed as Assistant Democratic Floor Leader. That's actually a position that, um, Representative Hobbs held in his first term, kind of helping to guide the day-to-day strategy, uh, for the Democratic Caucus in terms of policy that comes forward onto the House floor. So the reason I'm here, of course, is because I'm in service, uh, to the residents of the city of Southfield, as I have been for the last, uh, four years and will continue to be. Uh, and I want residents to know the best way to reach me, and that's certainly at my office line, which the office number in, uh, Cable 15 can come up with a, a graphic, uh, either tonight or in replay. The office line is (517) 373-1788. Uh, and the best email to reach me is jeremymoss@house.mi.gov. Um, so, uh, residents can reach out to my office, not only if they have ideas on legislation or if they have a specific, uh, bill that they want to advocate for or protest against. Um, it really is a one-stop shop to anything that goes on in Lansing to the residents of the district. If they need to get ahold of a state agency, if they have a question from a state department, if they need to reach a utility company, our office really has, uh, a direct line to some of those utility, uh, companies to get on a payment plan if they need to, to, to have adjustments that way. So it's, it's, it's much more than just, um, typical, "I want to advocate for this House bill." If they have a question, we either have the answer or we can find someone in the State Department who, who, uh, has the right answer. Um, I do want to touch briefly, and then I'll wrap up, uh, on the Governor's State of the State address, which was last week. Um, I, I was encouraged, uh, the Governor talked about investing in workforce development, investing in education. I think the real numbers are going to be worked out in the Governor's budget presentation, uh, which will be on February 11th. The Budget Director is said to expect harsh cuts. Um, as Vice Chair of the Local Government Committee, I'm going to do my best to make sure that those harsh cuts aren't felt here, uh, in our local municipalities. Um, and, uh, so that's going to come forward on February the 11th. One of the things that I was really encouraged by, and the coincidence of this, uh, city council agenda that's lost on me, uh, that was, uh, a, a, a call from the Governor was for the state legislature to, um, uh, take up the discussion again on the Eli Larson Amendment. Um, unfortunately, the political climate in Lansing, the, the Tea Partiers, I guess for lack of a better term, won't take it up. And, uh, everyone in the Democratic Caucus has signed on as a supporter to amend Eli Larson, to expand the anti-discrimination protection. So I'm incredibly encouraged that Southfield here tonight could have the opportunity to take the lead on that issue where the state has lacked leadership. Um, we had this bipartisan training right after I was elected. It was put on by Michigan State University. And, uh, it, um, was for new members on the Democratic side and new members on the Republican side. And one of the things that they told us as incoming legislators that the number one thing we are going to have to tackle in this legislative term is how to grow our population. Growing our population while protecting, uh, quality of life for residents right now is going to be priority number one in order to make sure that Michigan's economy is competitive, to make sure that our neighborhoods are stable. Uh, and they, it was this group called Business Leaders of Michigan came forward, uh, and said, "One of the things that this state lacks compared to other states around the country is a comprehensive nondiscrimination, uh, policy, um, so that, uh, talent, day or straight talent, uh, wants to be a part of an inclusive environment here in Michigan, and corporations, uh, will want to come to Southfield because they want to make sure that their HR policies, which are to protect LGBT employees, will match the city's, uh, protections here, uh, in city hall, citywide." And it's high that a 50% polling shows that 73% of Michigan residents support this. Um, so it, on an economic development issue, Southfield passing this ordinance might give me tools on the state level to say, you know, if a city that is one of the largest communities in Oakland County, and also one of the largest business hubs in Metro Detroit, uh, wants to expand, uh, anti-discrimination protection, then the wind is to our back. And we really need to take that message statewide. Uh, and then for, uh, for, uh, for personal or philosophical reason, I think that any time that the phrase "we," "the people," is expanded, it's a good thing. Um, so that's just kind of my brief, uh, report to you. You'll be hearing from me frequently, maybe you won't want to hear from me frequently, but I'll be here nonetheless. Uh, so I'm, I'm, uh, happy to entertain any questions. Uh, I'm, I'm excited about the, the opportunity, uh, to serve this, uh, community in a different, uh, avenue. Uh, but we'll never forget my roots here in Southfield. And I do see that there's still my seat empty up there. Um, but I guess I'm no longer allowed to vote on anything tonight.
Uh, that's for the question. I just want to comment on the fact, uh, appreciate the, the email, the legislative update.
Yes.
That you've been sending to us on the council to keep up with the rest of the things going on. And, uh, so much appreciated. I think it'd be helpful in terms of helping to make the decision to work together with the city of Lansing. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. And any resident can sign up, uh, on my website, uh, to get, uh, an e-news update. Uh, the website address is moss@moss.housedems.com. Uh, we'll get the right information. I think it's moss.housedems.com.
Always do look forward to you serving in that position. And appreciate, uh, the meeting that you had with Mr. Don. I'm sure he gave you, as you said, your marching orders.
Absolutely.
Uh, one issue that I'd like to add to that list again is the auto insurance.
Sure.
Rates that are very high in our district. So, if you create some way to tackle that and continue...
That'll, that'll have to be on the legislative priority list. I remember from, uh, sitting in that chair up there, that, that was an issue that I wanted to bring with me to Lansing. So absolutely.
Okay, and, and I have to say, you were the person that brought the Human Rights Ordinance to us, and we hopefully will be happy with it.
I hope so. And I, and I'm appreciative that it's on tonight's agenda. And this is a good thing for Southfield. This is a good thing, uh, for our state. And I'm excited to, to see the, the conversation tonight move forward.
Okay.
All right, take care.
All right, thank you. The presentation is on the mind, makes a social media platform for the, uh, master plan of the city of Southfield. And our city planner is going to be sharing with us some activities that are going to be taken place very soon as we update our master plan. It's going to give our community a chance to weigh in and get their involvement in the community of life in Southfield.
Good evening, Madam President, Council. Mr. Mayor and the audience. I'm very happy to, um, introduce Sustainable Southfield, the social media platform to encourage engagement on our master plan process. As you may recall, the master plan was last adopted in April of 2009. And the state requires that there is a five-year update, a comprehensive review every five years. The council did authorize the, um, the ending of that update in 2014. And we chose Sustainable Southfield as a catchphrase because sustainability now includes, uh, social, environmental, and economic development as far as sustainability. Phase one was an inventory and analysis conducted by the Planning Department, the windshield survey, which was conducted of all land uses last year, as well as input from all the other various city departments. We launched phase two as a public input, public engagement process. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. Phase three will include drafting the plan based on inventory, the analysis, and comments from the public, which will go through the Planning Commission and then ultimately a city council review. And the final phase is adoption by city council, which we hope to do later this year. Now, what is MindMixer? Well, MindMixer is a website-based social platform similar to Facebook, and it's a tool to collect public input. It's not the only tool, but it's one to, um, make it more user-friendly for our residents, whether you're a morning person, an evening person, or on weekends and you want to get on the computer. You're not, uh, challenged by coming out on COVID-19 to a public meeting. We will have those. But this allows you to, to be engaged, um, and, and engage a greater audience and encourage greater participation by all residents, businesses, students, and visitors. Our customized MindMixer site will allow the city of Southfield to solicit ideas and receive input from the public on a variety of 20 topics, which was launched last Thursday and will continue through July. The first set of topics on visioning will be up there for approximately two weeks, and then after that, on a weekly basis, we will change the topics. Results will be compiled and quantified and used when updating the city's master plan. It's easy to sign up and to log in. So if you go on the Sustainable Southfield website, this is the first thing that you'll see. And you'll notice that there's a sign-up button here. So first-time users will sign up with an email address and some basic information, or they can actually sign up through an existing Google, LinkedIn, or Facebook account. Once you've been signed in, it's as easy as putting your, your email address and a password, and you'll have access to the site. Now, the questions, um, are based on update from a mail-in survey that was conducted back in 2008, 2009. So we have a comparison of where the citizens are today versus where they were five, six years ago. However, we have hundreds, if not thousands, of time-tested questions through MindMixer that we pick and choose from a library, and we edit based on input from various departments. The types of questions include multiple choice, open-ended photo share, which I'm very excited about. And then some questions will actually deal with mapping police and pins on particular areas in the city. Uh, multiple choice questions, participants may leave other responses or comments. In this particular case, it says, "Choose up to three answers," and those will be tabulated a, as we go through. And the overall vision of Southfield, one of the most important issues facing our community, and in the short time that we've had this site live, the number one vote getter, maybe to no one's surprise, is improved street maintenance and reconstruction. But also, uh, other, um, questions that, answers that are received by vote getters is enhancing redevelopment of older commercial areas, and then improving pedestrian and bicycle connections. Those, so far, are trending on the high end. We're asking open-ended questions such as, "How can we create a more connected Southfield?" And this is where participants can just add what they, what they like to see in Southfield, or things that they see in other communities that they'd like to be brought to Southfield. Uh, this is limited in characters, and there are no wrong answers, but it does give you a prompt. And the other nice thing is that other participants, if they like this idea, they can comment or say that, "I like that idea," and encourage, uh, further dialogue on those answers. What makes my community sustainable? We've had a lot of good comments today on that. Here's one, too, again, that I think is, uh, picture sets a thousand words. "What is your favorite thing about Southfield?" Send a photo for a chance to have a feature in our master plan. This is a photo share feature. We've had a lot of great photos today, Carpenter Lake, the library, the River Rouge corridor. There might be other quotes from another community that participants want to upload. And the question, this question will remain during the, the entire 20-week process, so, uh, individuals can continue to edit, update. Here's an example of a user profile that will only be available to that user. Should they choose they could add a photo, they don't have to. And then you can see what your latest ideas and what your comments were. And you can upload, um, additional comments and ideas throughout the process. In this particular case, an individual wanted to see a group hug in the community and actually posted a photo of a group hug from somewhere else. You can, uh, the user can choose to allow certain information to be made public or not. But by saying, uh, allowing the activity updates, as one topic trends off, we will send a notification saying, "Three more days on this topic, new topic is going to start." As of, um, we hope to update these on a, a Thursday basis. Ultimately, we have 20 topics that have been vetted. Each topic will contain three to five questions. And then it'll, uh, once the voting has been completed, uh, the tabulations will remain available for public review, but individuals will not have a chance to vote on those anymore. This is to keep it fresh and to keep it up. And then we'll move on to the next topic. Uh, as I said, it'll be two general questions throughout the process, and approximately three to five questions for each topic, which will rotate every week. So we've had a coordinated launch of the Community Relations and Business Development last Thursday. We've had coverage in our local newspapers, press releases. There's a number of these cards that are available at the counters of all major, um, public departments. We have, we're holding public workshops. We sent out 103 mailers specifically to all homeowners and condominium associations, encouraging their, their residents and neighbors to participate. Mr. Spencer and myself will still do the dog and pony show and come to their board meetings and board meetings if needed. We've submitted this, we had email lists, we've used different marketing materials, and Cable 15 is producing, uh, a small piece incorporating our presentation tonight. So, to summarize, we, we began the launch on January 22nd. The first topic vision will be up for two weeks, and then we will rotate week in and week out after that. The site components, as in the bottom of the site, excuse me, um, section, who's listening? Of course, the council, the Planning Commission, and a team of administrators will be reviewing this on a day-to-day basis. It explains how it works, frequently asked questions. The other thing that's nice about this is we have a virtual point score. So once you log in, you receive 50 points automatically. The more you participate, the more points you can gain. And at some point later in the process, we will, uh, allow a certain total to receive, or be in the potential running for possibly golf tickets to our Minnesota facility, dinner tickets to one of our local businesses. Right now, it's virtual. The more you participate, the more you engage, the more points you can gain. And then there's also a translation button that I think handles about 90 different languages. So if someone's not very comfortable with Jewish, per se, they can get the questions translated into their native, native tongue. So we're very excited about, um, this tool. And it is only a tool to encourage engagement, to encourage public participation. We will be giving the council regular updates as we go through the process. Uh, earlier today, uh, so far, we've had, I believe, 213 unique visits, 1,700-page reviews. We've had about 70 participants actually vote and generate, um, 152, two votes today. This is only, is, is only going to be as useful as the number of people who participate in. I want to encourage whether you're a resident, a student, a business person that comes into our community on a regular basis, or even a visitor to get on and vote. Uh, you will log in your zip code. We will be able to, to tell if you're a resident or not. But everybody's encouraged to participate. And if you have to answer any questions that the council may have or take some additional feedback at this time.
If it was previously, um, listed for Southfield, I'm sorry, you have a question? I think it would be great for our community and getting it if needed.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of the city council.
Uh, we've moved the minutes of the, uh, regular meeting of October 20th. Committee of the whole, October 29th. Committee of the whole, November 10th. Regular meeting in November 24th. Committee of the whole meeting is September 1st. Special meeting is September 15th. And the regular meeting is December 15th, so we're...
Yeah, motion by Mr. Seibert, supported by Mr. Fraser, who approved the minutes. And in case, I have one question. Um, Ms. Ward, as it relates to the minutes of November the 10th, 2014, page 13. This was an individual that came to us, one of the residents, complaining about the basketball hoop that was in her, on her street. And he said it wasn't completely ordered. Can we look that up with that particular resident? Well, she came to the Committee of the Whole meeting.
Yeah, I believe that there was a discussion, um, with code enforcement on it, see what the, because again, if the, if the basketball hoop itself was in the street, that, that would be an impediment. You know, you can't put things in the street. Um, so I believe that there was a discussion. But I can follow along now. I will do now.
Okay, we have motion by Mr. Seibert, supported by Mr. Fraser, who approved the minutes. All the favor?
Aye.
And the total? Okay, we'll move this to the 30th agenda. Are there any items, Council, that you'd like to be moved from this agenda?
I have one question. Uh, on the, uh, the truck purchases are reading, they come to you?
No, none of these vehicles are take-home. And if I just, um, if I just add statement for items G and H, um, item G is replacement of dump truck for public works. And I'm going to circulate two photos of it being replaced. These are replacing, uh, vehicle 642, which is a, uh, 2002 Sterling with 94,000 miles. And vehicle 642, which is also a 6002 Sterling with 90,000 miles. The chassis are no longer, uh, the chassis manufacturer's no longer in business. Some replacement parts are not supported. Uh, the dump box is rusted and in poor condition. Uh, the vehicles will go out. They'll be, uh, disposed up through the city...
The vehicles will go out, they'll be disposed up through the city's auction process. My public works crew tells me that we're using a lot of public government duct tape to keep those two vehicles together. Item H, there's a number of vehicles that, if you'll indulge me, purchase a one GMC Sierra 2500, two-wheel drive pickup. That is replacing vehicle six twenty-nine, which is a 2004 vehicle with 115,000 miles. The old vehicle will be reassigned to code enforcement. Code, code enforcement vehicle three sixty-two, which is a 2001 Chevy three-quarter ton with 150,000 miles, will go to auction. Rusty, prey, brake line damage, ancient mileage. We're also proposing to purchase two, and again, this is under my age, purchase two GMC Sierra trucks, 2500, series four-wheel drive with Western plow. The cost per vehicle is thirty-two, seven thirty-nine. That is replacing vehicles six twenty-five and six twenty-six, two, 2002 Chevrolet 2500 pickups with Western plows with 112,000 miles and 115,000 miles respectively. Damage, age, mileage, and condition, the old vehicles will go to auction. Purchase, the next purchase is one GMC Sierra 3500 pickup truck with dump box, cost is thirty-seven, eight eleven. That's replacing six twenty-three, that's a 1999 Chevrolet 3500 two-wheel drive with dump box, 90,000 miles. Again, age, damage, mileage, and condition, the old vehicle will go to auction. The next vehicles will be assigned to facilities maintenance as purchase of one GMC Sierra 1500 two-wheel drive pickup, the cost of twenty-two, forty-nine. Replacing vehicle five ninety-six, a 204 Chevrolet 150, two-wheel drive pickup with 140,000 miles. That vehicle will go to auction. And also for facilities maintenance, the purchase of one GMC Sierra 1500 two-wheel pickup, twenty-four thousand nine ninety-three. That's replacing truck five eighty-two, which is a 2002 Chevrolet 1500 pickup with 165,000 miles. The old vehicle will go to auction. Motor pool, we're proposing to purchase one GMC Sierra 1500 two-wheel pickup, the cost is twenty-four nine ninety-three. That's replacing motor pool truck that was, oh, that was, that was giving to another group, another department, to replace the total vehicle six seventeen. Purchase of one GMC Sierra 2500, four-wheel drive pickup, Western plow, costing thirty-two. Replacing motor pool truck that was given to the water department. That's replacing vehicle four twenty-nine. Engineering, the purchase of one GMC Savannah cargo van, cost is twenty-two, six fifty-five. That's replacing vehicle two-two-nine, which was a 1999 Chevrolet van with 100,000 miles on it. Age, mileage, condition, busted frame, brake line, not saved the drive. Old vehicle will go to auction. Then, water sewer, there'll be a purchase of one GMC Sierra 1500 two-wheel drive, cost twenty-two, forty-nine. That's replacing vehicle four twenty-nine, 2005 Chevrolet 1500 two-wheel drive with 95,000 miles. Old vehicle will go to auction. Most of these vehicles have simply outlived their useful life. We stretch their life as long as we can. If you over the public works trash, pass away and for repair, all of these items were part of the budget for 2014, 15. And again, none of these vehicles are take-home vehicles.
All right, we'll move forward to our consent agenda. Consent agenda A is Northland plus Transit Center and the Detroit Transit Police Collaboration, and that's to support the Detroit Transit Police Department, which wants to be deputized by the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, providing that city liability concerns are appropriately addressed. Consent agenda B is the authorization to purchase grants for video conferencing and present for the city of Southfield Emergency Operations Center in the amount of $30,000 to $2,066. Consent agenda I is C is the reservation for governmental bodies to perform and intend this, this T shape for the Michigan Department of Transportation, and is going to include several Southfield employees, including the acting director for public work, the acting city engineer, the assistant traffic engineer, the public supervisor, the public tour supervisor, and the forestry supervisor. And they're going to work directly with the Michigan Department of Transportation. Consent agenda I D is authorization to purchase water meters and related items from Michigan Water Technology of Madison Heights in the amount of $600,000 for a period of November 1st, 2014 through October 31st, 2016. Consent agenda I D is to be the gears on tree trimming and removal services with contracts to Michigan Department of Labor and Fire and Michigan and branch tree service of Moore and Michigan with the contract beginning January 7th, 2016 through January 6th, 2016. This renewal, two-renewal option, but the expenditure is added to the second to $80,000. Consent agenda I D is after authorization to purchase one replacement street sweeper for the street and highway department from the Bell and Quikwick Company of Lake Coria in Michigan with a total purchase price of $240,000, $40,000. And those monies are coming from our management department. Consent agenda I D G is authorization to purchase replacement dump trucks for the public work department in the amount of $323,278. And that's from, that's two freight line services dump trucks. Consent agenda I D A is a detail from our city administrator, and that's to purchase vehicles in the amount of, in one pickup truck, in the amount of $280, $895. Consent agenda I D I is the Michigan Department of Transportation, a truck line landscape maintenance contract, and that's to authorize the city of Southfield to enter interagency contract with Michigan Department of Transportation for the big truck line landscape maintenance contract. And that will begin October 1st, 2014 through September 3rd, $2,090. Consent agenda I D J is the occurrence of changes to Moyn Thursday, the mid-renewal interchange by the Michigan Department of Transportation, and in order to currently modify Moyn agreement as a first step towards naturalization and beautification, M-10, I-D 93, and the Telegraph Road interchange. Consent agenda I D K is authorization to purchase cold tax materials for the public work department from Lakeland Airport Corporation of Dallas, Michigan, in the amount of $38,800 for a period of March 1st, 2015, through the 31st, 2014. Consent agenda I D L is to give additional responsibilities and compensation adjusted to our technology director, the Vern Walker, approving increases of dollars in the technology director's record from $92,171 to $102,000 effective January, $102,000 effective January 2015 within the management agreement here. In addition, giving me one-time lump sum payment of $100,000. And that includes, oh, no, test money. Consent agenda I D M is to approve the investment manager's management agreement with the Walkman Corporation, and that's working with our Southfield employees' retirement system. And consent agenda I D N is to approve our funding company as life and long-term security period for the city of Southfield employees. It would also mean terminating a contract with Edna Insurance Company, which is to be effective February 1st, 2015. We'll entertain.
And present.
Mr. Spencer, Mr. Fraser.
I move that we approve consent agenda I D's A through N. Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Seymour, to approve consent agenda I D's A through N. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we'll move to the public hearing.
Yes, I'll introduce this, and Mr. Spencer and Mr. Gardella will take the council and the audience here for a brief PowerPoint presentation. Public hearing tonight is GP 1275, this is to amend Article Four, General Provisions of the zoning ordinance by adding a new section 5.22-4 signs and lighting. This amendment specifically concerns amending of the zoning ordinance as a section to regulate architectural lighting in the city. Currently, there's a moratorium in place through February 20th, 2015. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Spencer and Mr. Gardella.
Good evening, council, mayor, and the president of this moratorium this evening. Excuse me, a city planner, Crowe, has already mentioned, this is GP 1275, an ordinance to deal with architectural lighting regulation within the city of Southfield. SAV last year received a proposal for neon type lighting on three particular properties within the city here. Both properties, State Wendy's Restaurant and Telegraph Road, the Big Green on Telegraph Road, as well as the Red Roof Inn on Northwestern Highway. And you can see by the graphics that are here up on screen, the proposal for neon type lighting on the buildings themselves, you can see that for the most part, they're horizontal lighting, a particular band that runs across the roofline of the building. But you'll also note that in some cases, they're also looking at neon lighting around windows. And in the case of the Red Roof Inn, also on poles for signage, and that's the light poles themselves. SAV and Mr. Crowe had noted, they go into moratorium until February 20th of this year. We do not have regulations on books to cover this type of lighting within the city of Southfield. So, we have been going through a process of putting together regulations to cover these types of lighting. Two types of lighting we have looked to regulate set by the ordinance before you this evening. Number one would be accent lighting, such as indirect wall lighting, channelized lighting. Two examples before you, you see the accent lighting in Lost Road, where the lighting band is actually underneath Eve and is meant to shine down on the wall. The other item is Pop Bell in Evergreen, Chipotle, Big B Center for coffee, that also shows a method of indirect lighting on the buildings itself. For sampling of visible neon, fiber optic lighting, two examples before you this evening, TJ and Friday's across the street, when that particular restaurant went through renovation. They also proposed the lighting that you see there with the red vans across the top of the building. Also, the Harvard Gardens on Northwestern Highway, that actually has had neon lighting, green neon lighting for years. Other types of lighting that we find in the city, Harbor Lot's Down Street, does have underneath canopy, around the canopy itself, inset light bulbs, and also across the top of the building through the holidays, they also provided this blue light across the top of the building outside. The other item that's kind of showed up in the last six months is very intense flashing lights around windows and doors within the city itself. And what I'd like to do is turn this over to Mr. Gardella, he has a little bit more information in terms of regarding that.
In regard to what's been showing up over the past six months or so, it's really been a change in intensity and type of lighting that's been going in these window-type applications. They're also seeing it a little bit around buildings. It's a form of light emitting diode. In the past, the light emitting diodes had a much lower output than they currently, they're currently seeing. But they have the ability to run, flash, quite a few things with the new type of technology. They also have the ability to change colors, to a wide range of colors. We actually have a video to show you real quick of just one site that shows you that if this is just a simple change from green to red, and green, you know, back and forth again, but they do have the ability, and purchase them, to change to four, five, six colors, to run, to affect from one color and phase into another color. So, we're starting to see quite a bit of that show up within the city, within these windows, and quite a bit of it was actually installed during the moratorium. But it's much more intense, and what we're looking for in the, in the ordinance language is not only to regulate what output is, that is light output that is coming from the window and measure that against ambient light conditions to make sure that it's similar to our language within the sign ordinance for output for signs. And we're also looking to regulate movement or changes in colors in those areas too.
From the standpoint of actual regulations, the ordinance before you, for accent lighting, again, we're talking about indirect wall lighting, uplighting, channelized lighting that would be behind translucent lenses. Those would be permitted, provided that they're attractive or an architectural feature of the building, they're not exposed and used only for backlighting, and there would be an approval process in all manner of residential loaning districts. For visible neon, fiber optic and similar lighting, again, we'd be looking at decorative or architectural feature to accent three-dimensional architectural elements. It should not be connected to signage. Be permitted on any side of the building not facing residential, provided, number one, that it does not exceed one linear foot of lighting for each linear foot of building facade on the side in which it's placed. Therefore, an example, we had a building that was 100 feet long that faced a particular roadway, the maximum amount of light, of lighting that you could have on that building would be 100 feet. Now, if you wanted to go above and beyond that, it had more lighting than just 100 feet for that particular facade, that additional lighting would count against your maximum level of signage for the zoning district you're in. So, if you wanted to add an additional 10 feet of lighting, your calculation would be 0.5 times that linear foot. Therefore, you could, counting against your maximum sign allowance would be five square feet. In addition, decorative lighting used during recent holidays shall be allowed in all loaning districts and are not subject to the regulations. Within the downtown development authority and within the city center area, they, any kind of lighting on buildings would be subject to a recommendation by those two bodies. Only allowed in manner of loaning districts and shall be subject to a development agreement in an overly developed district, should there be an agreement put in place. Regulation areas, as I noted, we'd be looking at both the city center area, downtown development authority, and then along our major corridors of Northwestern Highway and Penn, 9696, Southfield Road, and then Telegraph Road. So, those would be the areas right now where this type of lighting would be allowed. Not to say that in the future, we couldn't come back to the council if they so chose to add additional areas, but we thought at least we could start small right now in these particular areas. Maintenance. You can tell by the graphic before you, this is Irving on Telegraph Road, it's malfunctioning neon lighting on the back of the building. Obviously, maintenance would be a very important part of this ordinance, as well as any penalties and enforcement. Make sure that we maintain proper lighting. With that, the ordinances before you this evening, so SAV's recommendation, at least on the ordinance before you, would be to approve this particular ordinance for architectural lighting in the city.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address this particular issue, you have an opportunity to do so, and you have three minutes to address the council, in giving us your name and address or business address directly. Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this? Anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this matter? Thinking done, we will declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Snyder?
Um, basically what we're attempting to do here is that to, um, restrict the business from advertising. It's about appearances, it's, um, uh, to let, um, the light intensity and garish, uh, displays that, um, sort of have a, let's say, a Las Vegas look as opposed to, uh, Southwood Business District. Uh, I will be supporting this. I do have a question, um, if this is approved tonight, um, when is it going to back to forty-five days?
Well, if it was introduced tonight, it could be added at the regular meeting in February, and it would be published within ten days thereafter, so. Uh, as a matter of fact, I think Mr. Spence was wanting to indicate that we should extend the moratorium to get through the enactment process. We can, the, uh, moratorium discussion to expire on February twentieth, and obviously we won't even be enacting until February twenty-third, I believe. So I believe that the request would be to add another thirty days on the moratorium just to get through the enactment process.
Thank you, if I ask a question?
All right, Mr. Frazier?
Yes, uh, I do have a question, and, and that question is, can you designate some areas where you want to start this? Um, if a business in another area that we haven't covered this evening happens to put up some of the lights that we aren't, um, enacting on, does that mean that they're grandfathered because they have selected those areas?
I would say, no, they would not be grandfathered, especially if the lights were installed at time of the moratorium. Um, basically, within the ordinance, we state that any light that was installed during that time that, uh, wouldn't, and is not in accordance with the ordinance itself, nor has any permits, actually would have to be removed immediately.
Okay, except, the moratorium is going to stop once we pass the ordinance.
Right.
But we've still designated certain areas where we're going to apply this ordinance to. I'm suggesting that we have another area in the city that's not covered by the area that do outline, except for the moratorium. If someone puts up lights, then we wouldn't approve. Do those lights become grandfathered?
No.
Why not?
If I might, um, they would not be a legal installation according to the ordinance. If they weren't a legal installation, there would be no way that they could be grandfathered. And in order to be grandfathered or legal not performing at one point, it would have been a legal installation.
Then why are you, why are you selecting certain areas?
We wanted to make sure that, first of all, I think between the downtown and all the ordnance, they are rather special areas within the city itself. So we actually wanted to focus on those particular areas for this type of use at this time. Again, along our major thoroughfares, um, Telegraph Road and others, again, just an opportunity to make those areas more special than the rest of the city at the moment. Uh, but just, again, just to provide at least within those special areas, these additional, um, architectural lighting allowances.
Through the Chair, if I could, Mr. Frazier? Sure. Um, our thought was that to concentrate them in the areas that promote commercial development, and some of the other areas that don't have greater concentrations of commercial development are limited for neighborhood commercial, uh, we didn't want to detract from the, the residential aspect of those areas. So again, we, we thought we would start with the areas with highest concentration of commercial businesses in our traditional corridors, and then maybe revisit the other parts of the area after we've, we've tweaked this and seen how it approached. Though certainly, the council could decide to enact this in all non-residential districts. But that, that's what our original plan is, similar to the overlay development district, we decided Telegraph Road corridor, city center, and DDA as a starting point.
Well, I would think that if we wanted to protect ourselves from having, uh, light that we, we wouldn't normally approve, then we would make the, the ordinance citywide. And if you want to concentrate on certain areas, uh, that's fine. But if we make a public statement that we're only going to concentrate in these areas, if I were a business person, I'd go, you know, maybe I have license to put these kind of lights in my area because they didn't say they'd take this.
And again, if that's the preference of the council, I, we would interpret that it would not be permitted in those other districts if it wasn't specifically called out as an allowable use.
Yeah, first of all, we'll call company, second of all, we'll call attorney, so.
I, I think that, I think that your point is well taken, that we can easily say in here that those will be the only districts where this lighting will be allowed, and that will put it out, that it, it, then these restrictions will apply to the lighting that's allowed in the, in the approved districts and it's banned in the other districts. So we will make that change.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, I have a question about, um, with our ordinance, certain accommodations, I think will be, um, deck for decoration or decorative purposes, would be accommodated as decorative, that they would not necessarily fall into this order?
Yeah, yeah, if I may, uh, recognize holidays throughout the year, um, these regulations will not apply to those. Um, now, one of the things that we can take a look at, uh, would be, do we want to put a timeframe on that, uh, before or after a particular holiday? Uh, so that is definitely something we need to take a look at. But again, during recognized holidays, uh, this ordinance is not regulating lighting during that time.
Okay, so, we have to determine which holidays, um, we will get that, which holidays would be approved, as well as, I'm curious as how you define decorative, I mean, if somebody could make, make an argument about, do they add up this decorative in the Saturday holiday season?
Uh, obviously, that is up to interpretation, yes. I mean, typically, you see, and right now, we showed some, some, uh, some photos of lights that were around windows, and yes, typically, what you see around holiday time, uh, eaves of buildings, along, paths of buildings, people would light their lights around windows. I think that's what we would be looking at as decorative type lighting that would not fall under the ordinance itself. But obviously, something to discuss is putting a timeframe on that, so it is not up during all kinds of year. And again, we've seen lights at Easter, we've seen lights during the Fourth of July, and those are, these are probably, we would look at as people start putting up for. But again, probably putting a timeframe on that, we think that, yeah.
And one other. Mr. Snyder, excuse me, um, you know, one of my favorite mid-century modern buildings is on Northwestern Highway is the Frank Lloyd Building, and, um, it's below, uh, uh, ten miles of Red River, on, uh, on the east side of Northwestern. Uh, it's got a large corridor, and the owner has, um, it's really very attractive, he's got his lights coming out that, uh, it's not garish at all, but they do change color. Um, uh, every evening, they pick up the ritz of a rainbow of color, um, and it's, it's, uh, quite attractive. Um, so this would not, uh, I mean, it had for quite some time, so I know that it would be grandfathered, but this wouldn't preclude a lighting of that type?
No, not necessarily, um, some ord-
It's reflective lighting.
Yeah, there are some ordinances out there that put a timeframe on the color change, uh, we have other ordinance out there that show every sixty minutes they could change, so that you don't have that constant, uh, lighting or lighting on.
Whoa.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm glad to be here today this evening, and we discussed in our earlier meetings, so public will know, that we're going to look a little further at our sign, uh, or as it relates to the interior signage and windows, making sure that it doesn't look cloudy and it doesn't look, we tend to make our statements attractive, so that's going to come back, I'm sure of that. And, uh, but, yeah, I think in a moment at this time, that should possibly include, um, this ward, the extension of the moratorium, did that all be included, included, or?
I would do the moratorium extension separately from the ordinance itself, um, and then what we had suggested was thirty days beyond the present expiration date, which is February twentieth.
I'll move the, uh, extension of the moratorium, support.
We have a motion by Mr. Snyder, supported by Mr. Frazier, to approve the extension of the moratorium to, to, uh, to February twenty-third.
Thirty, uh, thirty days to the end, February twentieth, so, okay.
Thirty days to the end of February twentieth, two thousand fifteen. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I have any votes on this here?
I'll move GP twelve seventy-five amend Article four, general provisions of the zoning ordinance, uh, for, uh, sign and lighting.
We have a motion by Mr. Snyder, supported by Mr. Kruse, to approve GP twelve seventy-five. Any questions?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Are we going to include the, what we discussed about, uh, um, only allowing it in, in, in the areas that were designated at this time?
Yes.
Yes, I'm in the motion. Okay, as long as, that's part of the motion, part of the motion.
This is amended to include that provision, yes.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Imposed, motion carries. And we need an ordinance.
Um, ordinance number sixteen thirty-five.
Ms. Jarrett?
Mr. Frazier?
I move that we introduce ordinance number sixteen twenty-five. Thirty-five, sixty, thirty-five.
We have a motion by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Seymour, that we can introduce ordinance. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda, site plan. Mr. Frazier.
Through the Chair, we have site plan thirteen twenty-four, which is a site plan, a bigger class and modification of the Arborloss master development plan and OED agreement of all CARP Civic Plaza Associates to construct nine thousand one hundred eighty-four gross square feet of garden apartments and two thousand five hundred seventy-five gross scheme of retail space, um, properly located at two zero three zero zero Civic Center Drive on the northwest corner of Civic Center Drive and Central Park Boulevard. I'd like to just take a minute and, um, review the chronology of how we got here, what was previously approved for your consideration. As you may be aware, the city council approved the Arborloss Overlay Development District, the master development plan, and the OED agreement on November twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. It's ordinance sixteen sixteen. And the master development plan provided for three phases. Phase one was the original adaptive reuse of the existing four-story building, um, formerly known as Civic Plaza, for residential and mixed uses. Phase two included a ten thousand square foot retail component, freestanding accessory retail restaurant on the southwest corner, southeast corner of the site. And phase three included a future two-story commercial building, forty-three thousand square feet of mixed use on the northern portion of the site. Now, the, um, since this was developed and approved through the overlay development district, there are provisions for minor and major improvements. In this particular case, since it was changed to the master development plan that council previously approved, um, this is considered a major modification and shall require the recommendation of the City Planning Commission and approval of the city council to make that amendment, and also since it's an agreement, it takes both parties to agree on making an amendment. So the applicant is proposing to substantially reduce the previously approved ten thousand square foot retail building and twenty-five hundred square feet of retail on the corner and fourteen units of two-story garden apartments. As you may recall, on September eighth, the council did hold a study session to get initial input before the applicant, um, formally submitted this revision. And at the time, the council discussed mixed use with commercial on the first floor and loss departments above, in the event that the ten thousand square foot building was removed, the council was looking at the time for three to four stories with more massing, density and scale along Civic Center Drive. Based on that feedback, the applicant decided to move forward with his application, um, for the proposal tonight. On October fifteenth, the planning commission recommended favorable approval of the application posed on the capacity as the recommended bar body, because the use in the dimensions were consistent with the overall development plan, but ultimately, it's the council that has to sign off on that. On November seventeenth, the site planning committee of the council reviewed the proposal and again reiterated that, uh, larger retail was desired, um, there were some concerns about the, the layout of the garden apartments with furniture and grills and, and panios in front could become eyesores. They also wanted, uh, more density along the Civic Center Drive. Uh, at the time, the applicant had also included carports, and, um, based on the letter and having the material previously delivered, the applicant was desirous of moving forward on the carports. So the proposal that came to the council on November twenty-fourth only dealt with the com, uh, three carports at the time, of which the council did approve and it is now sold. During that discussion, the council directed that the residential imp sent back to the planner and the planning commission for further study because of the several last-minute changes, and it wasn't, again, in line with what the council had discussed previously. On December tenth, two thousand fourteen, the city attorney received a letter from the applicant's attorney requesting that the city council take definitive action on the planning commission's recommendation, approving it with conditions or denying their request. And that's what's before us tonight. So just, again, as an overview, this is the master development plan as approved with the amendment of the three carports. The applicant is proposing to substantially keep that plan intact, but remove the ten thousand square foot building, build a smaller twenty-five hundred square foot retail, and fourteen two-story units. And this is a detail of, of the proposed, um, amendment to master development plan. This is to allow for, um, a one-bedroom, two-story apartment, roughly six hundred thirty-five square feet in, in an open concept, and I'll let the architect and the applicant into more detail of that. Conceptually, this would create a two-story wall along Civic Center with the existing, uh, four-story Arborloss to the north or in the rear. The, uh, proposal, um, does include a smaller scale retail on the corner of, um, Civic Center and Central Park Boulevard with some outdoor seating. This is a concept of view of the interior of these garden apartments. This is what it would look like at the pedestrian level with, um, front yard panios, and, uh, entrance actually would, uh, take place in the rear of these units, so there would be, uh, access from the public street right of way. Here's an illustration of what it would look, looking eastward on Civic Center with Arborloss on the left or to the north. Again, another concept of the rendering. And then the rear of these units would include additional carports. At one point, there was discussion about garages, but the applicant, um, decided to keep it more open, open air feel. This is the overview, again, phase one, includes the existing former Civic Plaza office building, which has been converted into loss departments with retail on the first floor. Um, the proposed phase three, which is the two-story loss, forty-two thousand square foot mixed use here, the carports that were approved by council in November, and then the proposed frontage along Civic Park, Civic Center. One of the, um, one of the items that I think, um, that was captured in the Detroit Free Press yesterday, that I think is more in line with the multi-story mixed use, the retail on the first floor and two, three, four stories above, um, again, I just wanted to bring this up as illustration of, I think, some of the things that I heard the council discuss before. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the applicants and the architect to get into the details, what they're looking for, and then I will be happy to answer any questions that the council may have after that. the council may have after that.
Thank you, give us your name. Give us your name and business address for the record, please.
Gollcar two oh three on Civic Center Drive.
Peter Stillire with Design House Architecture, three oh one Walnut Boulevard, Rochester, Michigan.
Now is your opportunity to commit any additional arrangements that you might have.
Okay, I would just like to kind of bring to everybody's attention the overall vision for this property as it kind of overlays with the overall vision of the city center area. What we're looking to do is create a density on this particular property that maximizes the pedestrian feel, the residential living, and put in enough mixed use that it supports the residences nearby as well as the residences directly within our parcel. And I know there's a lot of discussion about a bigger building along the, along the street. But as it is, we're, we're up to the limit of how much we can park in a really nice picture of a loss downtown in the way it's state, but it's, the density, low as part of our parking calculations, not to the point that we can't make a deal with, with the city about, you know, having less parking, but to the point where it makes our own businesses impossible to sustain. So what we're showing right now is the max capacity of density on this property and trying to bring to the city of Southfield the pedestrian feel, especially along Civic Center Drive, that I believe we are all looking for. And it's, it serves to recognize that the Cancer Society and the buildings across the street immediately are both shorter buildings than the one we're proposing in this case. The building we have on the table tonight is twenty-five feet tall, as it fronts the street, and sets back just enough to give that kind of mid-central city feel that we think we were fulfilling toward the vision here in Southfield. Of course, we could make the building shorter and taller and achieve the same thing, but that would not create the street edge that we're looking for. And I think that you all are looking for is a complete edge along the street, which creates less empty pockets and parking voids for when somebody is out for a walk or a jog or just walking down the street or moving at a point B. So to us, this is the, this is the best kind of synergy between, between everybody's intentions that we can come up with.
Any other comments?
One of the visions you saw of the building downtown, we've had a sign up, and we've been marketing this building as a commercial building for, I think, now two years, we've had zero people. So we've had calls, but that street is just not busy enough, Civic Center and Central Park. We love it to be, but it's just not. So we looked at the other thing, and that's how we came up with the apartment square. We're leaving the corner open, so we'll have, you know, some kind of commercial at some point. The more people, the better, more, you know, opportunity we have to have people. Also, we've got the parking, you can make it much taller, but third phase, the building in the back, the next building you want to do, will have to probably be smaller, because we want to park. So maybe we've explored this, sadly, we haven't tried. We would love to see, you know, a grid, you know, Applebee's on the corner and Starbucks on the roof, there's not much traffic there. They're just not there. There's traffic, you know, like at seven in the morning, I see it every day much. Seven is probably ten, and that's it. So this is our line.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have the council debate, and then you'll have a vote shortly. Council, any questions?
Mr. Tyberg. To the planner, you know, we had asked before, in my view, some of those are parked in most cases. We require, our parking requirements date back to the days of a different Southfield, more automobile-driven. In this district, we're trying to have it more pedestrian-friendly, more about walking. Is there something that could be done with Arborloss two and three parking? And also, I noticed next, right next door, American Cancer Society, that front lot is, I don't think I've ever seen that lot fall. You know, one of the things I think we should be encouraging is parking exchanges. I know that some of the churches do that in Southfield when particularly for retail office or retail parking on Sunday. So that's, that's one of the things I'd like to see. I appreciate what Mr. Kirk and his associate assistant at Arborloss taken really a building that was obsolete and turned it into an alternative use, and it's been very successful, as we know. I do not favor a two-story building on Civic Center Drive. I would like to see something, especially when we looked at all of our renderings for the city center, we wanted something with a little more size, but that is an important corner. I know Mr. Kirk and I do not agree on this point, but I feel if he builds, if he'll come, and that, you know, we've got to start somewhere. I would like to see at least a three-story building. If he's, you know, adamant about no retail on the first floor, but I don't want to throw away our agreement. I want to maintain this OED agreement that we have. I want to see him build a third phase. We just don't want a two-story building there. And if it had to be a little shorter, but higher, that would be great too. But I'm going to be voting against this particular site plan, but it's not a vote against Arborloss. It's about coming back with something reimagined that is a higher, has a higher footprint or taller footprint. And I would like it to go back through the process, through the planning process, and kind of, you know, a restart of this second phase or third phase.
To the chair, I can respond to both councils, council and signer. Yes, we are taking amendments to the parking ordinance through to the planning commission in February and hope to have it back to the city council in March. So they'll be much more in line and realistic with the new economy changing retail and business standards. We do allow and encourage shared parking, and I think in the city center and the DEA, these are areas for opportunity that each individual property owner does not have to have a seat of asphalt and working out some shared parking as used to be. Again, the focus in the city center, from what I heard from council previously, is to be more pedestrian-oriented. At some point, we might get to a density where we have to consider parking garages, public parking garages. We're not there yet. I do recall a similar conversation with the council at twelve mile on Southfield Road when the first project they came for wasn't the right project, and we waited until a better project that was more in line with what the council was agreeable to and that we have a nice development there. So maybe this is just too premature for you to work through this. And finally, this is, the OED agreement is intact and does require an amendment by both parties. So this does not throw the OED agreement, it's, but the council is being asked on this particular request to make a decision tonight, but that does not preclude the developer coming back with, with a revision or some other modification based on your comments.
Any other questions about the, Mr. Fisher?
Yeah. When I look at this, one of the things that goes through my mind is, this piece of property in city center is probably going to be the most expensive piece of property in the city itself. And we want, when we plant a building in there, we want to plant the right kind of building that will help us realize what our plans are for the whole of the city center. And what I see as far as a site plan today really doesn't fit what I thought we were trying to establish in the city center. And I'm with my colleague here that I really can't support this site plan. I'm looking for something that's, that's comparable with the other buildings that are in, in the city center and complementary, that's the word, complementary to the other buildings in the city center. And I just don't think this one does it, but I would hope that you would go back and take a look at it and come back with a taller building, something that has retail on the first floor and either commercial or residential above. So that's, that's what I see.
Good to hear.
Thank you. I'm going to follow up on what Mr. Fisher said. We see that site a little differently than you see it. That, that particular site sets the tone for so much around there. You don't feel that way, and I've heard you say something before that you don't quite see that way. But because of its location, it's going to set the tone for everything around it. So it's, it's a, a site that has special, it just has special attributes because of its location. So I have to, I have to agree with my colleague who said. We'd like you to come back with something a little different, and you stated, you stated your feelings, and I agree with them. Will I be successful? Very much the majority is successful. Because it is kind of lunchtime for the whole city center. Yeah, I think we would like to take some modifications and, um, we'll do.
My, my concern is not just approving the site plan, but we have to make sure that it aligns with the vision of the city center as well as the OED Overlay Development District, which is why we view that in detail on what we want the city center area to look like. So if this time comes, we will take a motion to approve or deny SP thirteen twenty-four.
To the chair, would you like me to read the recommended resolution?
Resolved that SP thirteen twenty-four, the site plan review request and modification of the Arborloss Master Development Plan and OED agreement of Gollcar Civic Plaza Associates to construct nine thousand one hundred eighty-four gross square feet of garden apartments and two thousand five hundred seventy-five gross square feet of retail space on the property located at two zero three zero zero Civic Center Drive on the northwest corner of Civic Center Drive and Central Park Boulevard, parcel two four two two dash two seven six dash zero one seven, section twenty-two, city of Southfield, Oakland County, State of Michigan, site planned dated November thirteen, two thousand fourteen, and received by the planning department on November thirteen, two thousand fourteen, be denied based on the following. Body number one, on September eighth, two thousand fourteen, the city council reviews the proposed amendment to the Arborloss Overlay Development District Agreement and Master Development Plan at a study session. In reviewing the property owner's proposed amendment, the city council discussed its concerns, which generally consisted of the council's position that it wanted to see more mixed-use development on the property and not just a continuation of more apartments if the larger retail component were to be eliminated. Body number two, council expressed to the property owner that if the OED agreement and master development plan were to be amended, that we need to be more massing, fencing, and scale along Civic Center Drive. It was expressed to the property owner that if an amendment were to be approved, the council would want taller residential buildings, three-plus stories with retail on the first floor. Finally, the proposed modification to Arborloss Overlay Development District Development Agreement and Master Development Plan to eliminate the ten thousand square foot retail building plan and replace it with a two-story, fourteen-unit apartment development with twenty-five seventy-five square foot retail component does not comport with the vision of the city council for this area, as previously discussed, and therefore does not comply with what the city council specifically conditioned to seek inclination to approve a proposed modification of the OED and master development plan.
May I say a motion this time?
All thumbs.
By Mr. Tyberg, supported by Ms. Seymour, to deny SP thirteen twenty-four. We go to a roll call. Vote please. Vote to deny. A yes means to deny and a no means to deny. Mr. Tyberg?
Yes.
Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Thornton?
Yes.
We've got five people that are voted in favor to deny SP thirteen twenty-four. Vote to deny. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to the communication portion of our agenda. And we have several people wishing to address the council. And when you come to a vote, you'll wish your name and business address for the record, please. And you have three minutes to address the council. And we'll begin with Mr. Barbara Kelly.
Thank you, council mayor, for an opportunity to address you today. I think it was twenty-five years ago that I had an opportunity to address you, because I was concerned that this city had over-encountered population. The African-American population was at that time relatively small. We were moving it, and as we moved in, we had not comprehensive issues with the city that had to be brought to you. In doing so, we asked that we are, we asked for your protection. We shared with you the girl population that was worthy of the protection of the city. We asked for equal access to all of the things the city has to offer, to its public accommodations, to its employment, to its housing. But in that request, we did not include requests for people who are today identified as gay and transgender. That admission needs to be corrected, so I am in favor of the proposed ordinance that you have to include gays and transgender individuals into your ordinance. And I want to caution you, this is not a request for sex acts of marriage. I think I've heard some discussion, now that's a discussion to be held in other developments before the Supreme Court as we speak. This is not a request for, you know, imposition of fines for those individuals who are in violation, who do not respect our brothers, who are gay and transgender. That's against operation of another government. What we are asking this council to do is to recognize gay and transgender people as human beings, to let them know that these individuals are valued to us, that they are people who have work and they are working hard for protection, that we must acknowledge their role as citizens, that they, that they have a place in the city of Southfield, and that place has to be respected. You have to ensure that moving down the statue is inclusive. Now, one of the calls I very grate, speaking with the model for the city of Southfield is that it's an ordinary city. Before then, we had the legislature, I enjoyed that, but the city of Southfield as a center of all cannot exist until it includes all people, to recognize the human values that each and every one of us bring, and to respect that value. So again, I support the proposed amendment. I trust, I am trusting that we vote in a way that includes our all, all of our humanity, and I believe that the arc of justice is going to move in the direction of inclusion. Again, I thank you so much.
All right, thank you. The next person wishing to be covered, so you would like to go to council and confirm a town?
My name is Barbara Kelly, and I'm resident of Southfield since nineteen seventy-one. Was elected to city council in nineteen eighty-three. Was elected to city council in 1983 and served two terms. Tonight, I'm speaking in favor of the proposed city code as it relates to discrimination prohibition prohibited. And as agreed, it protects all types of civil rights, including sexual orientation, which is a new subject of debate in recent years. And I want to give you, but this council has everybody discriminated against. I don't know, but I have. And so I'm coming from a different point of view. My family in Detroit in 19, maybe the early 50s, bought a house in Detroit on the west side, a first house. People on the street signed a petition to get us off the street. And of course, that didn't work. And ironically, the leader of the petition was of Japanese origin, of a nation that we had just ended war less than eight years prior. In late 60s, in Hacienda Heights, California, we were denied a house of our dreams that had been sued under the new fair housing law of 1968. We were told that by the owner that blacks would destroy the neighborhood. Can you imagine how humiliated and embarrassed that we had experienced, all because of the colorblindness? When I moved to Southfield in 1971, I was expecting the same thing, but there was very little that. However, on that city council, I used to sit there before any of you sat there. And we worked very, very hard for inclusion and diversity in the city. I want to remind each of you of the oath that you took, and Mr. Lloyd Cruz took when you were formed to an elected position within council. You did not take the oath to add, with the exception of my religious beliefs, for any other personal reason. We are reminded at this time of year when people use the Bible to enslave others and read the clauses about slaves obeying their masters, if they didn't, they were whipped. My great grandmother was a slave, so you can imagine how I feel. This proposed ordinance before you to vote to deny any of their civil rights as stated in the United States Constitution is an abuse of your power, and really, you should not be serving on city council. You really shouldn't be serving on city council if you think that your denial is that. And I was told to it Dr. Benjamin King, who said, quote, "Discrimination is a hellhound that gnaws at Negroes in every weight, scene, moment of their lives." Remind them that the life of their inferiority is accepted as true in this society and dominating them. And we can put in instead of Negroes, we can put anyone. And I personally cannot support anyone who discriminates against a person of whom, for religion or special reasons. And I thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak is Jay Catlin.
Thank you. My name is Jay Catlin, and my business is Johnson's 2966 Woodward in Detroit. Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the proposed human rights ordinance. In doing so, I'm wearing two hats. The first hat is that a gay man grew up in the City of Southfield, attending Southfield Public Schools, graduating from Southfield later, and living in the city for almost 20 years after I graduated from college. My parents are longtime residents of the city and have been so since 1959. Both they and myself are very proud of this step that hopefully the City of Southfield will be taking. My second hat is that of as the staff attorney for the ACLU of Michigan's Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Project, where I've worked since 2001. The ACLU of Michigan has worked with more than a dozen cities and townships to enact local human rights ordinance that protects gay and transgender people from discrimination. It has been my pleasure to speak with several members of your city council regarding the proposed ordinance, and then had the opportunity to communicate with both your city manager and city attorney regarding this very lawful goal. From our experience with these local ordinances, there are several common principles and conclusions that we can share with you tonight. First, that local human rights ordinance that protects people against discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity are very much needed. The current state of law in Michigan is that a person can be fired from a job for being gay. A lesbian woman can be denied housing. A transgender person can be denied medical services or services in a restaurant. That is because our current civil rights laws do not cover sexual orientation and gender identity. In the 14 years that I've worked for the LGBT project, we have received countless complaints involving discrimination against LGBT people who have no legal remedy or any remedy at all to address these incidents of discrimination. Today, 34 local cities and townships have non-discrimination ordinances that include sexual orientation and gender identity, including Southfield's neighbors, Lakeville, Royal Oak, Burnell, and Huntington Woods. Cities and local communities clearly have a legal authority to pass human rights ordinances such as what is proposed tonight. This authority can be found in Michigan's Constitution and in Michigan Gay's Law. And LGBT inclusive ordinance assigned for doing the right thing by treating all people, including gay and transgender people fairly, is also good for business. Many of Michigan companies have already addressed this issue with their own non-discrimination policies. They include Big Three, Whirlpool, Dow Chemical, Delta Airlines, Steelcase, and Southfield located companies, such as Kroger, AT&amp;T, Wells Fargo, Merrill Lynch, Spy Sears, Viacom, Starbucks, two named, very few. Studies conclusively have proven that communities that are welcoming of diversity attract more businesses and more entrepreneurs. A local ordinance like this one proposed tonight serves some very important purposes. First, it communicates the message that Southfield is a city that values treating people fairly, that values diversity, and believes that discrimination is wrong. Second, this ordinance serves to put others on notice that discrimination is not to be tolerated, and also to prevent incidents of discrimination from occurring. Most cities, the inclusive ordinances report very few complaints of discrimination because the ordinance has already served a preventive function. Third, these ordinances help to build momentum in the state of Michigan to eventually pass civil rights laws that are inclusive of gay and transgender people. Michigan legislators, as Mr. Moss mentioned, and I do look to local communities to see what they are doing.
That's your half first half third thing.
In closing, I'd like to commend the City of Southfield for its citizens doing the right and fair thing. Makes me proud to have been a longtime resident of the city and to know that the city now is all people. Thank you.
The next person to address their counsel is Mr. Carmen Duncan. And you have three minutes to address your counsel. I think given the routine that our retaliations fall on the councilwoman and Catlin, she has been in the main account. Three minutes.
My name is Carmen Dunbar, reside in 1901 East Source. I am in favor of this ordinance because my daughter is part of it. But I am very concerned about our council president, who seems to be cowering back and forth. In September of 2004, there was an article in the Washington Post stating that she really believed in religious preferences. Another one was in February of this, of last year, where Reverend Jordan confesses her standing against this LGBT community. It seems that in the last couple weeks, through an article from, for the minutes of the town meeting, that she seems to have changed her mind for access to the city, and is now saying that she was one of the people introducing this ordinance. And we have, everybody knows that Jeremy Moss and Tim Cyrus were the teachers back in March. It seems to me, as a resident, that our present Jordan is doing this more for political reasons than she wants to run for mayor and try to influence our residents to vote for her because of this. She's not going back to her religious beliefs and, you know, sort of being wishy-washy in the idea that, okay, I'm going to support it now because it's politically reasonable. Thank you.
The next person to go to the council is Barbara Selton.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Selton, and I live on West Keylong Circle here in Southland, Michigan. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak for you today, and I am here to address the ordinance that amend Title I, Administration of the Code of City of Southfield by heading in new chapter 16, discrimination prohibited. I am thankful that we live in a country that is growing to respect the lifestyles of all of the citizens. I am a very proud and active resident of City of Southfield. I have lived here for the 20 years, and I move here because of this beauty, diversity, and this openness. I feel that Southfield is a city that pays less attention to a person's race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age, height, weight, condition of pregnancy, marital status, physical limitation, mental limitation, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, and pays more attention to the contribution that a person can make to the betterment of the City of Southfield. Because Southfield, like that, truly is a city at all. I am here to support 15th discrimination prohibited clause into the Southfield non-discrimination ordinance. It is well done in anything whose practice is discriminatory towards persons who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender, hurts its economy, and diminishes its identity. People like Cliff, Detroit, Dearborn, Burnell, and thirty others that I know of have recognized this and have passed legislation for protection of everyone. Now is time for Southfield to get on board and to the city. As it relates to discrimination, no witness knows better than mine how hurtful it feels to be discriminated against. As an African-American, I know very well how sometimes oft hurt and more often culled forms of behavior of people who through ignorance can hurt. I've learned all of those things cannot make people love you, and in ignorance you cannot educate them, and you have no other recourse but to provide the needed legislative protection. Now, let's not allow being the mainstays to prevent our city from joining other forward-thinking cities and passing this most important addition to this ordinance. Let's not make this a political issue. Let's do this for the benefit of citizens. Let's do this for the benefit of the economy. Let's do this for the benefit of the City of Southfield. Both of us, to our separate impact of discrimination.
You have ten seconds.
Okay, cannot afford the practice of being fighting against any form of that. That is why it is reported that this is true, this is needed law, in the City of Southfield non-discrimination law. Thank you.
The next person to speak is Ms. Selton.
That's the English, 2401 Wildwood Court, 48034. I first would like to thank Erin Moss, Amber, and Lawrence, named inside, for initiating the human rights ordinance that's coming forward this evening. I would also like to thank the council in advance for reviewing the proposed draft and hopefully approving the amendment. I want to feedback, as Councilman Moss pointed out, as Ms. Selton and Patrick, we pointed out also, there is a direct correlation of a positive economic return on investment when organizations exercise the highest level of diversity and inclusion practices. This progressive policy can be a catalyst to attract businesses and the type of talent and also the type of residents that we want to build and move and reside in our city. One way that we can actually prevent or eliminate any biases towards one group of people is to simply humanize them. When you can humanize a person that's different from you, it helps to eliminate biases, bigotry, prejudices, because you actually see that person as similar to yourself, or just with simple, light needs, civil protection, you know, the desire for civil protections that everyone wants to have. I'm also going to go out on a limb, and I'm trying to make my child poster childhood issue, but my son is a gay man who has come up through the school system, is one of the most talented, brightest, gifted individuals that I know now. And at 23 years old, I am very, very proud of him. He is a product of Southfield. It does distress me that there could possibly be any form of discrimination that denies him access to civil opportunities and protection. But prior to my son coming out, I've been a champion for diversity inclusion methods when he was a young boy. So this is before he came out. I would champion any type of issue where there's potential discrimination on any level. Again, we need to see this as a business imperative, as it has been promoted in other economic development meetings. I know that our business development team has brought information back, and it's very important that the City of Southfield have the appearance of a forward-thinking city if we do want to have the best businesses besides the new business here. There is a reason why Detroit is just got momentum that is like a freight train throughout downtown Detroit. They're attracting the millennials, they're attracting the business setup. But the one thing that they do have, they have the appearance of an inclusive environment that's welcoming for all groups of people. So I thank you very much, Councilboard, for reviewing this and hopefully approving it.
All right, thank you. The next person is Pamela Gerald. And the next individual is Gerard Holland. And the next individual is Matt Terrio.
Thank you, Matt Terrio, EOLox 336, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. I am a resident of Southfield, Chicago, Illinois. Let's not make this a case of racial discrimination as being the same thing as so-called sexual discrimination. I fully expect that the council will probably approve this tonight. My concern is this: Where and what is the problem? Are we having a problem in Southfield? Some on council, in the past have said, I make my decisions on the facts and the data. Somebody, please, give me the facts and the data. Where are the police reports? Where are the complaints? I don't think we're having a problem in Southfield. I think we are better than that. I have no problem with an ordinance prohibiting discrimination on one's sexual character. I do have a problem of an ordinance being enacted and look in search of a problem. If a state law is not passed, we in Southfield, if we pass this, are stuck with the expense and enforcement. Who's going to do it? Where is the money coming from? To rush this through now, what is the urgency? I don't see it. It's not a problem. I'm a member of Bible Walkers Association. I've lived in Southfield over 40 years. I called our president of the association today, and I asked her, have you heard of any problems? Is anybody having any problems? No. She says she can't understand, saying to me, why this all of a sudden is a big problem and has to be rushed through. I can tell you right now that there probably would be a state law prohibiting sexual discrimination against gays, bisexuals, and lesbians. The hangup, and I've been told firsthand, is the inclusion of transgendered people in the ordinance, in the ordinance existing. Couple of years ago, you heard, we have to have civil rights for gays, bisexuals, and lesbians. You didn't hear anything about transgender? You didn't hear anything about transgender the last two years that's been lobbed onto it. Why? Are transgendered people automatically considered homosexual? Somebody please tell me.
You have two minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I conclude that our representative, Mr. Moss, should put his hand across the aisle. If he wants to get the law passed, he's got to give to get. Let me forward my saying that the art of politics is compromise. This law will never pass if Mr. Moss and his caucus is going to not give the other side what they want and only demand what they want. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I think, Madam Chair, there are several people who saw this on the agenda on Friday and did not know, of course, they missed the deadline to apply, they asked to speak. I'm not asking them to recognize them.
Sure, that's fine. Can we get the voting, can you get your name and address and get three minutes to get the number?
I'm Beth Greenham, thank you for inviting me to speak. I've lived in Southfield with my spouse Julia since nineteen ninety-six. We have a son who was born in nineteen ninety-nine. One of the best aspects about Southfield and the primary reason we chose it, yes, we chose it, is its diversity. Our neighborhood is the lightly mixed, it's a salad of colors and relationships, statuses, and ages, and everything, and sexual orientations, and gender identities, and presentations. Everyone in our relatively active block association gets along, we just all respect each other's individualities and commonalities. Today, I'd like to bring a Jewish perspective to the question at hand. In Deuteronomy sixteen twenty, the Torah says, "Sedek, sedek t'adulth," which means, "Justice, justice you shall pursue." What does this mean? Our rabbis teach us that the Torah never raises words, any repetition has significance. The double iteration of justice says to me that we're not just commanded to be interested in or to support or even teach our children justice, we're supposed to actively run after and pursue justice. We're commanded to make sure it happens and to set an example for the world. The first iteration refers to pursuing justice for oneself, who's heard from some African-Americans who have done that and who continue to do that. And we're supposed to put on our own oxygen mask when we're on a depressurizing airplane before helping the person next to us that makes sense. The second iteration, though, must be understood, as don't stop there, you must be an avid in pursuing justice for those who don't yet have it, as you are for yourselves. Sedek, sedek t'adulth, justice, justice you shall pursue. As you know, all of us, every single one of us, including transgender people, are created with seven etrimens in the image of God, in the image of the Creator, every single one of us. Is it just that the LGBT community is not really protected from discrimination in Michigan? I don't think so. There is every reason that we should pass this legal order.
Your time is up.
Sure, you can get three minutes and give us your name and address for the...
Good evening, Southfield County Council, my name is Julie Isik. I'm a resident of Fergal, Michigan, and I'm three, four thirty-six, old in Fergal. When I'm not teaching middle school, I coordinate Fergal's signature kickoff event this summer, which is Fergal Pride, and I invite you to all come to it, make it a safe experience when we get to experience in Fergal. Pride is important as it speaks to unite the GLTQ and our minority communities. We come together to celebrate our uniqueness and celebrate our commonness of being human. Last week, I was able to attend the signature event in Southfield, the Martin Luther King Day of Remembrance. The atmosphere of the two events were very similar. In fact, at one point, a resident of Southfield was proudly standing with my son in the clear house seat right next to him, so I could sit down with my six-year-old, which I really appreciated, and this is the exact same way I welcome people into Fergal when I meet them. So I was kind of surprised to find out that Fergal doesn't have a Human Rights Ordinance that's inclusive of GLTQ people. Speaker has the Martin Luther King Celebration, touch on the same point. To honor the pain of this city, we must remember that our fight is not over till all people have equality. This came out of whole works of work again, but Southfield already has this very good substance. I saw that, and I see that every time I come to your city. Southfield already has against diversity. I ask that you join Fergal and thirty-five other cities to adapt a Human Rights Ordinance that's inclusive of GLTQ people, because you guys deserve that too.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to address this issue? Can you get your name and address for the next person?
State Dr. Dorena, two one six nine seven McCone Avenue, in Southfield. My name is State Dr. Dorena, current chair of the Jewish Gay Network of Michigan, a program with Jewish Community Centers in Dupont, Detroit. I am speaking to you this evening because we've been residents of Southfield for many years. During that time, we raised two beautiful daughters, celebrated the marriage of one and rejoiced when our grandson was born. We've been members of Temple Yannouelle, a park where I stand in the fire. We've been very active in our neighborhood association. To consider ordinance that would do any length and recognize full equality and respect to any Southfield resident goes against the very foundation of Southfield's history. According to the online brochure on the Southfield website, under the Global Business Residential Communities section, diversity is not the only one of the strength of Southfield's global business community, but also our residential makeup as well. Southfield is an international city bustling with people from a rich array of cultural, racial, ethnic, and religious backgrounds. Growing up in such an international environment helps make Southfield children globally prepared, knowledgeable about and understanding of many cultures, customs, traditions that make up our global community. Southfield truly offers the best of Michigan and the Midwest. Southfield has been good to my partner thirty-five years, but we have been gaped, our nail marks was blown up, and our, six of our eight tires or two vehicles were stabbed. Now, I can't say it was because we are lesbians, but my spirit swans, and many of these things that happened go uncaught for me. I called the police, they got both of them, they didn't report it, but, you know, what can they do, there's no evidence. So there is things that do happen, and we want you to know that surely there are things happening and underreported, because people don't know for sure it hasn't been followed through, and I want you to know that this will be very, very good and helpful for us. My family is a part of Southfield's diversity, but we are also legal strangers to a non-discrimination policy at the essence of Southfield's human resources, rent time, and employment applications form. To create an ordinance that would ensure equality and legal accountability is necessary on many levels. Our city and all of its residents deserve to be treated with respect and dignity in housing, in employment, and all areas. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Cindy Clardy, two four three seven zero, Tamarack Circle, Southfield, Michigan. I am sixty-four years old, have lived in Southfield for almost twenty years, and serve as vice president of the Tamarack High Water Neighborhood Association. My life partner and I have four room children and four and a half grandchildren between us. I am here to speak in favor of the proposed expansion to the Southfield Human Rights Ordinance. About fifteen years ago, I was contacted by email by a Southfield Fire Department employee who was experiencing discrimination and harassment on the job and didn't know my return. He didn't think he would get any help from his supervisor or from HR. I talked with him and his fellow Southfield residents about his limited options, all of which were risky, considering he had no employment protection whatsoever on national, state, or citywide levels. Unfortunately, that's still true today. I have brought copies of Southfield's non-inclusive employment application form and HR mission statement with me as examples, which I will give to the clerk when I'm done. I've never forgotten that young man and my feelings of helplessness and not being able to help him. As a parent and as a grandparent, I feel that it is our responsibility to help make this world a better place for the next generation, and inclusive Human Rights Ordinance would help to do that. Not only do I feel responsibility to the younger generation, but also to the older generation. My family often had a grandparent or older relative living with us as we grew up. Seeing my mother's decline in health, I would never want to be a financial burden on my daughter, so I signed up for long-term health care insurance, long before I retired. However, it has been disturbing to realize that many elders and gay lesbians who have been living openly in the Detroit metro area suddenly feel forced to go into the closet once they need long-term care. They feel extremely vulnerable. Studies show that most nursing homes aren't even aware that they have any LGBT residents. Many boomers, myself included, have no intention of ever going into the closet in our open ears. We are no longer, when we are home, able to carry for ourselves. We will leave elder housing that's open to everyone regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, and caregivers who treat LGBT elders with the same respect that all human beings deserve.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this matter?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a comment, I know we don't do that in public communications, but the accusation is in the request, I'd like to make a comment, and clearly state that a past council president, Ms. Wallace, has been criticized. Let me just tell this as English, that Section eleven twenty, the discrimination of prohibited till November seventh of two thousand, oh, it's fair and fair now. And so we have this tonight, this included more than we had back then, but we were the first community to have such laws, the first one in nineteen seventy, looking at all the other cities, because of our diversity. So I want to be respected, and my colleagues have to be respected, for what Southfield has done.
And I will take some comments as well, because my name has come up. You know, I worked at the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission as an investigator for over eight years in the eighties, and we fought for civil rights and stood up for discrimination, and I worked as an investigator. So I've always been on the side of fighting for human rights. Whatever the person thought, I said, "It's a misjudgment, inaccurate." I mean, you know, he said it without precedent, without, he said it caps the first stone, because how can you quote me, "It's totally inaccurate." I did not change my mind on this human ordinance. I will say it again, Mr. Moss brought it up at our council meeting, there is not one person on this council that brought the Human Rights Ordinance up, and everybody had an opportunity to do that. I read it for the first time, and when I saw it as it came from my city attorney, as I said at the meeting, it was a nine, it was no coroner. I have members of my family in the gay community, I have members of my church in the gay community, and for me to not approve a Human Rights Ordinance, it would be the right thing to do, because I totally agree with equal treatment for all. So I want to make that very, very clear.
Yes, second, Madam Chair.
I just received today a copy of a letter written by, Ms. Stephanie English, I guess it's an email, in which I was accused of not attending a legislative committee meeting because I knew the agenda was going to be primarily presentation from citizens who wanted the Elliot Larson Antidiscrimination Ordinance approved. I don't know how someone can read my mind, who hardly knows me, and say that I didn't attend the meeting for that reason, that's ridiculous. You know, nothing about my life, you know, nothing about my friends, you know, nothing about the people I stand up for, and this is something I've always supported, I have gay friends, I have lesbian friends, I value all people, and I'm disgusted that one of our residents would slander council members for homosexuality. I'm totally offended by that. I'm totally in support of this. I'm not going to tell you my life story, but I have gay neighbors and gay friends in church, and I've seen the horrible things that were done to people when I was a teenager, when they had to march in parades in Detroit to get attention, and actually terrible things done to people. And I am just appalled that a member of our community would attack me and this sort of, because I supposedly deliberately did not attend a legislative committee because of this. You have no concept of what, what are you talking about? I support this, and I support these people, and I'm proud of you, all of you who came out and ready, really, to say who you are, because there are people that are very prejudiced, and I understand conservatives, I don't understand it, I know that there's a lot of conservatives, religious, I think, anti, you know, let me tell you something, and no, animals, chickens, are what we call gay. It can happen to animals, it can happen to people. But don't make it something that people make up in their heads, it's an act of nature, and respect people for the fact that they are human and they deserve to be treated with consideration. God loves you, God loves us all. This discrimination has got to stop, it's disgusting to me, totally disgusting, and I'm very proud of the people I have stood up for, and I can talk to them. I believe you have my admiration. Thank you. And I've been full support of this ordinance.
Okay, we'll move to the council portion, we want to get the council. Anybody wishing to speak on the, under the council portion?
Whoever.
Well, we actually approved the two thousand and fifteen council schedule, our guarantee motion.
Some rule to council schedule, so I get on your...
We have a motion by Mr. Siders, supported by Mr. Cruz, to approve the two thousand and fifteen council schedule. Any questions?
I do.
Mr. Fisher.
I'm going to vote for it, but under duress, because I think we, there are some time to think about this since we first saw this, that there are some real serious things that we ought to be addressing this year, and I believe that we don't put it down on the schedule, unlike some folks that say, "Well, we need something, we need to add a meeting." It just never happens. So I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this under duress, because it is, at least it's a meeting, and I'm going to do, I'm going to write some issues that we need to, we need to address, some serious issues that we need to address as a council this year.
We have a motion by Mr. Siders, supported by Mr. Cruz, all in favor. I'm, I'm in the focus, won't you care? But any other items, council, that you'd like to impose?
Yeah, I just want, one, couple things I just wanted to mention, well, glad to see this evening with a presentation with the directors of my mixer and our movement towards the development strategic plan, and I want to thank the administrator and planner for actually, I think this is...
for, actually, this ideal of sustainability as our focus, our framework for moving this city forward. I understand that State asked us to provide strategic planning for five years, and to be, to be honest, with the way that things are advancing today, you know, five years is not strategic years, you're behind the game. So I'm hoping that even once we develop this, that we have a more continual process to continue to reevaluate our direction and where we're going. Hopefully, this is going to engage more residents in the decision-making process, because I feel this is in the midst of a lot of change right now. 2015 is a huge year for change for us, and I'm pretty positive that starts right here, and there's probably going to be a lot more to come, so this is a time for residents to be more engaged, and again, if I go back to the idea of sustainability, you already mentioned it, but when you talk about that, a lot of people often start to think about it as an environmental discussion, but sustainability as a whole, I look at economics, I look at social, and I look at environmental issues, and even just tonight, you know, as we look through certain things, I mean, we did a vote on the planning consent agenda about something just as simple as bowling services, but understanding that that's actually bringing the infrastructure to that development of that program of those services that's going to be helpful to our environment, even the site plan modification that even we denied it, we denied it for a purpose of having a greater vision for better economic development. So it wasn't that we were against what's going forward there, but as you see, we collectively have a greater vision for what can happen right there. And lastly, in a social perspective, I know we're going to vote on this in just a moment, but this human rights ordinance speaks directly to that, and I mean, for anybody to say, "Why?" we need to take a vote on this, I mean, I just have to keep in mind, you know, the Constitution's development government where everybody, the power was going to be vested in people, and everybody had equal rights and so forth, but there's still the 15th Amendment to allow African-Americans to vote, the 19th Amendment to allow women to vote, and if you, you know, if we want to be leaders here, we need to make sure that certain things are guaranteed for all members of our community, and so that Southfield can be seen as that leader city, that place where people want to come and know that when they get here that they're going to be accepted and appreciated. So I'm just very anxious and excited about this coming year and the things that we have before us, and the opportunity to see.
All right, Mr. Cruz.
Yes, I'd just like to say that this year, we celebrated the 30th anniversary of the Martin Luther King Program, and it was led by, I mean, it was introduced in Southfield by Miss Tally, who came to the microphone, and, you know, she's still the engine that is not a great set up front. So thirty years ago, when she sat down in front and said, "Let's do it," I wasn't around here, and I was lying, I wasn't around here, but I have been part of it for almost as long as I've been in the city of Southfield, and it was probably the best, the largest celebration that we've had, and so as you heard her tonight at the microphone, she was a fortunate director, it was thirty years ago, and she still is, so hats off to Barbara Tally for introducing the L.A. Gay Program.
Yes, you do thank you, that's awesome, you've helped that community. Anybody else on council?
I just, I'll play you a commercial. I know Miss Tally will appreciate it. There is a 30th anniversary book that's available through the task force that highlights all thirty years of the Martin Luther King Task Force. We have certainly kept the dream alive in Southfield, and with the people who spoke tonight, it's another wave of keeping that dream alive. None of us are free until all of us are free, and I am a proud member of Martin Luther King Task Force, working with Miss Tally for thirty years, charter member, but we do have this book that's available, and it is a fundraiser for Martin Luther King Task Force, a committee led by Miss Tally and myself put it together, and if you're interested, could hold it for me, I'll make sure you get a copy. Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say something about Miss Barbara Tally, and this surprised her, and I wanted to say that the Martin Luther King event, but I wasn't on the program, and that's a few in the way, actually, but people don't know something about her, and we should know. We have an ordinance in Southfield to preserve Budland and Woodland, and if it wasn't for Miss Barbara Tally, we wouldn't have a Budland's ordinance, and I want everybody in this community to know that. She was on city council at the time, and she was also one of the women voters, and they were supporting the Budland's ordinance. She introduced it, I was not on council, I was just an active participant in the community, and Miss Tally came down, she was working in Oakland Valley at the time, at the Finance Division. She came down in her beautiful blue gathering business suit and her high heels, and we walked around Budland, where the 696 freeway came through, and if it weren't for her, this ordinance wouldn't exist. She got the council to pass it, and she needs to put it, and I want everybody to know, Miss Barbara Tally is a giant little person in this community, a lot of people just don't understand things that she has done.
Absolutely, you are just as stellar in this community as Miss Tally, and you probably need to do something for this, so we'll come out and talk about it.
Yeah, Barbara Tally.
On what we can do about it, in addition to being the first African-American woman to sit on this city council, paved the way for myself, Mayor Lawrence, former Mayor Lawrence, both that will come after us, so we thank you. All right, I do have just one item, and I'd like to pass this out to Cruz, he's passed it to the administrator, the clerk, who will pass it down and ask you over this way, and has to do, that I believe we need to have some action very fast. You know, after the Northland closing and the loss of the Northland, you know, I talked with the city administrator, and I said, you know, I want to be included on these discussions as it relates to Northland, and, you know, based upon the, we had asked highly with the PDA director, the city administrator, the city planners, attorney, you know, I really think we need to have an emergency umbrella approach quickly, and hire the best professionals that are in, in our community or even out there in our community with a proven track record to get some action over at Northland very soon. I'm happy to talk to some community leaders over the weekend, you know, people want something done, and they want something to pass, and so what I recommend, meaning is just an emergency action regarding the crisis of Northland Center, and I thought about City Center, and even with our vote this evening, Evergreen Land Use, and I'm recommending that we have a rush emergency RSP to contract with an established business development firm with a proven track record for new land use to identify, profile, and secure business ownership for Northland, City Center, and Evergreen Road, land use, and integrate with the city, and that we select a firm that's got experience with municipal, state, and federal government agencies as it relates to successful change of land use and entitlement, and that we move very quickly in terms of securing an RSP, RSP and identifying a company or an agency that can assist us, and although we'll be going for the Louis B., it's high priority, I think we've got to include whoever we select, a company that is able to handle past crisis business development and has had some successes. So I would really like for us to move quickly on this, this is on, and just really get, let's go out for an RSP, I'd even put some dates in here, if we can have an RSP, you know, ready by Wednesday, have the deadline due on the fourth, and really act fast, because the longer we wait, who knows what can happen, and I think we must decide to leave the parade rather than follow the parade, and I think Northland, City Center, Evergreen Road, the property there, we've got to act fast, and so I wanted to present this to council and refer it to you, Mr. Tom, with all the opposition.
Madam Chair, what is this all about?
It's about, at the meeting we had on Friday, we even talked about getting our RSP, and I'm saying we need to act soon, to go out and solicit a company, companies.
Yeah, it's a timeline here, to get a successful company, to come in and go sort of doing, and give them, but six days.
Well, that's negotiable, but I'm saying we need to act fast.
Oh, I think the other kind of track, but, I guess, otherwise, it's up to emergency action required.
Well, I'm saying that we need to act fast as it relates to Northland and as it relates to...
To publish our RSP Wednesday, January 28th, who is even prepared?
Well, that's what we want to, that we would...
Well, maybe somebody is even prepared.
Well, that's, no, we've got tomorrow.
That's it, it's timeline, but they should have the RSP Wednesday.
Well, I'm saying we can direct our city administrator to move fast and to put it in place fast, because we need to act fast.
I have a question. I guess that term is the attorney, we don't own this property, there are four owners at Northland, there's the Trinity Church owns Penny's, there's Target owns Target, Macy's owns Macy's, and then the outfit out of New York City owns, but the rest of them all. How do you, how do you hire someone to respond to somebody owning private property? I don't get it.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what this is designed to do is to have somebody come in and look at a design of maybe what the city's vision would be there in conjunction also with what the market would say is appropriate. I'm not sure that this is a vision that we would own, because obviously, you're absolutely correct, we don't, we don't own, so I think it just needs clarification, that's just kind of what I'm assuming.
Right, I don't think that we don't own, or...
The other, the other part of this is that a number of times, we've turned at LTU. You know, to me, Northland is very, very developable, I think it's A's or Rovers Shopping Center, because you've got a tremendous infrastructure there between Eight Mile Road, Northwestern Highway, Southwood Freeway, Weville Greenfield, and lots of parking, but I, it would've been nice, Ms. Jordan, if we had a heads up over the weekend, you knew you were going to do this on Friday, and I just know about it.
Well, no, I'm bringing it to council when I thought about it, we can do it, that's why we're doing it now.
Well, I'm not a parent on this tonight, I think I'd need to know a little more, and I'd certainly like to see the RFP before we issue something like this.
Okay, I would like to present this to council, if we want to direct our administrators to go on for it.
If I may, if I may, Captain, this, we're looking at two parcels, Northland and the parcel across the street. Part of our conversation last Friday was about the visioning and the planning. For the parcel across the street, the discussion was an establish of all the various catch-up plans that had been produced over the years, and going through, and working with a planner, architect, to go through a process. The other, and I think this, in my mind, is about developing an RFP for a resource team, and that resource team would include a planning, a visioning, and a marketing expert. You know, we have had a national entity do some market analysis of, for the City Center parcel, we may need to look at that as well, then a legal resource team, the, I think it's very accurate statement, the parcel crosses the street, we're thirty days into ninety days of diligence, we have a legal right. The Northland parcel, there's a process and a procedure that I think we need to let that shake out, whatever, that doesn't mean that we cannot, you know, that we should perhaps begin pursuing this process. I, you know, last week, we were very focused on doing a bond rating call with Standard and Forests this afternoon, for part of the library bond refinancing. Some of us have had some discussion about putting together this resource team, but we could certainly begin a process of an RFP and bring them back to council. I think relative to Northland, I think we need to just let that play itself out, but nonetheless, we should be looking into what it is we'd like to see on that site. It's a hundred and ten plus acres, I think as councilman said, Cypher said it is, there's four, five different owners, all the owners, a lot of things will need to develop, but I see no reason why we can't pursue the development of an RFP and go and do that process.
All right, thank you. I'm still interested at this point, so we have yet to know for pulling out to have our administrative staff.
I'd like to see the RFP, I'm not opposed, but I'd like to see the RFP.
And just, as a note, I know there was an RFP done years ago for the City Center, I'm going to be looking to lay my hands on that, and I'm looking to someone who has a lot of old records, Mr. Cottick, you know, that would help us out putting that together. I mean, you know, we, our purchasing group does an excellent job, day to day, the routine purchases, but when you get into an RFP like this that's highly specialized, it does take a little bit more precision.
All right, I just think we need to go fast, but I know Dan, you know, give us that.
I agree with him, but, you know, this proposal, I know, Dr. Dan Rose was, he was an expert, they had some proposals, it was announced by the City Center, they gave three whole boxes of books, and I got Yelena Sankey, who's even one of them, about the proposal on the cross street. We've done it before, but it takes a lot of time, and the books are the best thing.
All right, you just pay it, and you can take it.
Well, this sounds to me like a knee-jerk reaction, and it, actually, it plays right into the category that I had earlier about having meetings to talk about some serious things. I think, you know, I'm not against doing something quick, but I think this is a knee-jerk reaction, so I can't support it.
Well, I support the concept, I think we, I mean, it's awfully broad, but I do support council.
All right, Mr. Cruz.
Same, and we definitely need to take action, but I'd like, just so we can, you know, develop something for us to review, before we actually take action on it, and feel more comfortable with it.
All right, I'm definitely in support. All right, thank you very much. We will move to the mayor's portion of the agenda.
Hey, Secretary, I would just like to thank those that sent letters and prayers on behalf, I'm going to be heading for them tonight next week, and appreciate all the prayers and blessings that you're sending, it's just great.
Administrator, do you have any additions, Mr. Cruz?
I have briefly, I have briefly mentioned the standards and floors, I will be sharing with council the presentation that was presented to them, wealth of information, and an awful lot for the council that we have survived and weathered this great recession. I'm very pleased with that, and in some of the items that we're looking at, in the next February, I will be presenting to council the bond proposal and our online for road projects, and we're very excited about that. We had General Providence Hospital last Wednesday, and I was very pleased with a lot of the things happening at the hospital, and that is also featured within our presentation, the standards and floors. One of the things that really jumped out at me in that presentation was the diversity of our employment base, as well as the diversity of our tax base, how fortunate we are as a community not to be reliant on any one industry. The ads in ads were just under thirty percent of our tax, of our employment base, it's a very powerful presentation. I'd like to name Treasurer Loebur, Jim Pierce, Laurie Siskin, Michael Manning, Terry Crowe, and Charlie Freeman in helping us put down that presentation together. Thank you.
All right, we'll move to... All right, we'll move to the administration's portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, obviously, as we've been discussing, is the draft of the Human Rights Ordinance, um, that we discussed at the January 12th, COW as well. And as you will see from the draft, uh, we prohibit discrimination in the city of Southfield in the areas of employment, housing, and public accommodations based upon race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age, height, weight, marital status, physical or mental disability, family status, sexual orientation, or gender identity of another person. Um, I believe that this is the ordinance that complies with what I've heard council indicated it desires, and is now in front of you for approval and introduction this evening.
Anti-motion.
I'd like to spell, move the proposed amendments to the Southfield Human Rights Ordinance, or?
We have a motion by Mr. Cyrus, supported by Mr. Grayson, to approve the Southfield Human Rights Ordinance. Any questions?
I just, um, one quick comment. Uh, I appreciate, I, I mean, I couldn't, I couldn't say it better than the people that spoke this evening, and, uh, the diversity of, of Southfield was reflected in the people who spoke, and, and how they viewed the issue. I, um, I really can't add anything else, but I'll just simply say, it's clearly just the right thing to do.
Yes. And I, I represent all of the people who want to, uh, want to move to the right ordinance to the town. So we can say we have a motion by Mr. Cyrus, supported by Mr. Grayson, all in favor, I am opposed, motion here. Mr. Grayson.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1636. The court?
We have a motion by Mr. Grayson, supported by Mr. Cyrus, extensions, ordinance 16W6. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed, motion here. Okay. Any other ideas you'd like to forward to the council, if not me, you're welcome.